The door going into the dining room. You'd want to close that up, wouldn't you?
No, that would not. It would be probably a door that would. Walk from the apartment area. You could go from there right out. The deck is here. There's also this side deck that's here and a sliding door is right here. So you go right through there and then go outside.
But if I understand correctly, the hatched part in the upper right-hand corner of the floor plan that says "main part of house," that's the dining room though, right?
That's correct, yes.
So I mean, if you did have a tenant, you wouldn't want the tenant walking through your dining room.
No, they wouldn't. They would go in and out unless it was a real emergency through that back door. You see the picture on the end of that.
Your zone, the door to the outside.
Right, right.
And there's another door in the front.
I just meant like eventually, if you'd ever just wall that off.
No, I wouldn't do that. I know you have to have a minimum of two different egresses, so that's actually three. But no, they would be able to always get out.
I think the egress into the rest of the house is not really considered an egress, right? It's really this or that then?
Correct.
Okay.
Got this guy too. Two hundred and three.
So this can't be blocked up.
Right, right.
All right.
Pretty straightforward, you know, all set.
Yeah.
What's good to me?
Motion.
All right. I move to make the following findings a fact. Number one, according to the town assituate assessor's records, the property at 44 Rebecca Road is owned by David and Joanne Ball. The property is located in the residential R3 zoning district and the floodplain and watershed protection district on a lot of 15,600 square feet. Number two, on February 5th, 2015, David Ball applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling within the single-family house on the property at 44 Rebecca Road. Number three, according to the application, the floor area of the primary dwelling is 1,776 square feet. The floor area of the accessory dwelling, as shown on the enclosed plan, is 420 square feet. The floor area of the accessory dwelling will be less than 750 square feet. It meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings. Number four, the accessory dwelling is under 750 square feet in size and has one bedroom. It is subordinate to the primary dwelling. Number five, the application indicates there is room to park four cars in the existing driveway and one in front of the porch. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and parking for the primary dwelling. Number six, the applicants have submitted a signed, notarized statement that they will live on the property. The special permit will be recorded. Any future new owner will need to file an affidavit with the planning board that they occupy the property. Number seven, the property is on town sewer. Number eight, one accessory dwelling unit is contained on the lot in a single-family house. It will be a separate housekeeping unit. Number nine, there are no exterior stairs. Number 10, the application meets the standards of assituate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Second?
Second.
Can I just ask a question? From that last one where you said no exterior stairs.
Yeah, I kind of wondered that.
There's no new exterior stairs. That's one of the criteria for.
Oh, I don't know. I said that? I can't remember if I said that there's.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
I can't remember if I said the word "new" or not. Okay.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 44 Rebecca Road with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the building department, the Board of Health, the Department of Public Works, the fire department, the water department, and other town agencies. Number two, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans submitted with the application and filed with the decision in the town clerk's office. Number three, the property at 44 Rebecca Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling, as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and/or the square footage of the accessory dwelling shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. The number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the first floor plan submitted with the application and attached to this Number four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Number five, the planning board will require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the accessory dwelling. Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted at any time. Number seven, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Number eight, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9. Number nine, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. At the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that either the primary or accessory dwelling, accessory unit is owner-occupied. Number 10, at each transfer of ownership of the property, a new affidavit that the owner resides on the property shall be provided to the planning board within seven days of the closing sale of the sale of the house. Number 11, this special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this decision and its conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Probably be filed in what, a couple of days?
Yeah. Give us like ten, ten seconds.
Nice sweatshirt. I have the same, actually, I have the same picture on a painting. Or on a, it's not really a painting, whatever it is, screens, screen silk or something else.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Might do accounting approval minutes while waiting for his.
She's got to pass around the signature sheet.
Okay.
I noticed that you preempted the minutes with what was going to happen tonight, which was pretty interesting. I was like, wow, she can tell what's going to happen.
Oh, you saw one of the future minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I know, I saw you did. While you sign that, I move that we approve the assituate planning board minutes for February 26th, 2015. I believe that's the only one, right?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just a second.
Get these out of the way, then we'll move right into Bob's motion.
Don't I wish.
I'll wait for that. Okay. So that is signed by just me. And.
They're not stealing.
I move that we approve $31.25 to image resolutions for the requisition submittal for approval and the purchase order for that.
For zoning maps, small zoning maps.
Okay, okay. In addition, $65 to Laura for expenses reimbursed that she went to the CPTC annual conference. What was that, is it?
I haven't been yet, it's a week from Saturday.
Oh, okay.
If anyone else wants to go, there's plenty though.
And also, I recommend $506.52 to Gatehouse Media for two ads, the legal ad and the assituate mariner for the zoning bylaw changes for 2015. And also the legal ad and the assituate mariner for the zoning bylaw changes. Oh, one was the 529, 531 countryway common driveway. Actually, why is there, why is there two of these?
For the zoning?
Yeah, it looks like the same thing. Legal ad and the mariner for 529.
Required to do it twice.
Twice, is that why?
Yep.
Okay. So anyway, I'm sorry, the total is $506.52.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Don't mix that one up.
So where is the conference again, I'm serious?
It's in Worcester.
At 65 bucks, didn't sound like it was going to be in Hawaii.
No. Not even in Boston for 65 bucks.
Rockland maybe.
Well, that's a little nicer than Rockland. They always have a pretty good lunch. Sixty-five dollar lunch.
I haven't washed it yet, it's on our T boat. There's a story that says Worcester's rising. I guess they had like a whole little half hour thing about Worcester.
Park alongs.
I think they're working pretty hard on it.
Figure out how to keep that from happening.
It's a free-for-all now.
Yeah, I know. Oh, can you sign?
Three signatures.
Okay, well, we're signing those at 7:45. Next item on the agenda is the continuation of public hearing. Makes you a special permit to village business Delverley District 50 countryway. Seems like I haven't seen you since last year. It's probably been sooner than that.
This is actually the fifth anniversary.
I believe that. Well, you know, we were actually commenting on this.
I believe you're the applicant, then you may be required to prove the case.
We were saying 50 countryway, had there been 50 meetings?
Forty-eight, any and all.
Oh, it's the fifth anniversary, you've got to start all over again.
Why don't we pick up on where we left off, I think, to describe your conversations with the fire chief and the other open items.
Sure. You really left me with two design homework items. The first one you just mentioned is the access, the secondary access to the back of the site. After the last planning board meeting, which was back in December, I went down, had a meeting with Chief Murphy. Laura attended the meeting with me. And what we did is we discussed having emergency access over the back of the property, over the MBTA property. And that's what we've incorporated in the latest plans. What we talked about with him was having an access way from this location over to Drew Place. His concern was regarding egress from the site, not access onto the egress so that a truck could leave without going to reverse essentially and turning around. So what we proposed, it's a 10-foot wide pavement section, and then it has one-foot gravel shoulders on either side. We had provided some turning templates, showing the turning templates working at this access onto that pathway and at the access onto Drew Place. That's the emergency access that we proposed. The second item that you left me with was kind of revising our construction sequence and erosion control details to more accurately depict what we were proposing for our construction sequence. And so we did that, we added two sheets to the plan set. We added sheet six, which is an erosion and sedimentation control plan. We originally had a temporary sediment basin in the location of Building B. We've now relocated that to the back of the site, the back corner. That way we can construct the foundations for Buildings B and C while that device is in place. And we took this plan and we further broke it down to sheets six and seven, which kind of have to do with the phasing. And we really took a lot of the stuff off of the plan from underneath, but we highlighted the areas on here that we had available for tenant parking in the existing building during the construction phase. Outlined that we would be constructing a temporary haul road around Building A while the foundations are being built for Buildings B and C in the back. We've identified temporary soil stockpiling areas, construction staging areas, we have the detention basin obviously. We have some temporary fencing along the back of the existing parking lot and erosion control device along the back of the existing parking lot, really to kind of define the construction zone for the first phase. And then the second phase, second phase primarily being the build-out of Building A as Building A gets moved to the front. It just revises, it shows that at that point, the parking out front here would be removed for the tenants obviously because the building would be moved. It does maintain the construction haul road, although it would be much lighter use. All the big material would be coming over that road in the early phase of the project. It includes the inspection requirements for the catch basins. It includes kind of our O and M plan and our long-term goals as far as pavement sweeping, maintenance of the tree box, filters, et cetera. So it'll line up well for when we prepare the swift permit during the construction phase. Included was the construction sequencing. We also included that in the letter that we had submitted to you.
So that reflects your latest letter?
This reflects our latest letter, correct. They should correspond. That was it for plan changes that we made on the site?
That was your homework.
We've spent a lot of time working very closely with Greg and also with Terry McGovern. One of the first things that we worked on was the construction sequence and trying to get that realistic in terms of the way all the moving parts have to fit together on the ground. And I think we made a lot of progress on that. We also did a lot of work on the emergency egress, the egress off the site that Greg was just talking about. And then there were also some, some other items. I talked to Neil Duggan about the question of having the tenants in Building A while you had construction of Buildings B and C. He said that happens all the time, it's not a problem, but there would have to be fencing around the construction area with like a gate, you know, a chain link all around and a chain link gate that would lock at night and just, you know, isolate that area from the rest of the site. So if I can go up there for a minute, I can point out some of the things that are, that after our last meeting with Greg, he was still going to do a few final fixes on, changes the.
Footback.
So this is sheet five. My hearing is too acute, it's ridiculous. So what is sheet? It's, oh, where do you find it?
What are you looking for?
The emergency egress sheet.
So this is the emergency egress?
Well, the one that has the vehicles, like the diagrams of the vehicles on it.
I'm looking at the PDF. I mean, it just says one of one, but it's titled in the lower right, it says emergency access egress plan.
That's the one that I'm looking for, yeah.
I didn't have that as part of the plan, so that was just a separate figure that we submitted.
Well, maybe we can.
I could certainly incorporate it into what you needed.
That's the money you want, right?
Yeah. So there were a couple little things that still need to be, when you look at where these fire trucks are actually going to go, they're going to kind of swing out away from the pathway a little bit. So that's going to be incorporated in the area that the MBTA says is going to be available. The permission from the MBTA still has to be forthcoming. That's something that in the conditions, it's requested before the pre-construction, which seems like, you know, reasonable time to get it. This island was going to be concrete, I'm sorry, Cape Cod berm, and that's very, you know, soft and sort of squishable in terms of being asphalt. So that is now going to be sloped granite curb. And there will also be some plantings in that area so people can't park there. What else did we have on this?
So that's been updated? Because I see.
It hasn't been updated yet. All those updates are still coming.
Okay, because I see the CCV on this plan.
So we talked about all of those things, and then there were some notes that needed to be changed. There's still a registered landscape architect stamp that's going to come on the landscape plan and a whole, you know, list of some minor things. But that was one of the major ones was just trying to get this egress a little more tightened up so that when the thing finally goes through the MBTA's process and so on, that it really fits with what's actually going to happen. There were some other things that we looked at in depth. One was, and these weren't things that were discussed with Greg, but were more like responses to comments I got from all of you, and that included what was going to happen with the older building and how we were going to, you know, try to make sure that that really could be moved. Oh, one other thing on the egress that's really important is that there was some input from the planning board about making sure that that was plowed. I contacted the chief, he said, yes, that does absolutely need to be kept plowed. So that's going to be in the, either the condominium association, master deed, or whatever kind of property owners association they have. And that's something that also has to be requested from the MBTA. Can that, you know, can the town go and just plow that area? Probably they'll let them do it because it's, you know, maintaining something for them, but.
So the town is going to plow?
No, it won't be the town. If I said the town, I misspoke. It'll be, probably be the, either the condominium association or whatever association they So that's where we are now with a lot of these, these small items. And aside from that, there's a lot that really needs to go into making sure the affordable units stay affordable. Those things were all put into the conditions. We put in some detail on the phasing and then really just tried to, I just tried to make sure that there were appropriate stopping points for the developer in terms of getting material to the town before the pre-construction conference, before the first building permit was requested, before the start of construction. There will be a consulting engineer, it'll be John Chassia doing the inspections, who did all the review of the plans. And he'll be looking at, at this in points which are similar to those of the subdivision rules and regulations. And then there will be some other things that they'll look at, like the temporary sedimentation basin, he'll look at that and, you know, review the size of that, make sure that that's large enough. So, I don't know if anybody had any questions?
Yeah, a question on your staff report. You had put an item that says, "The renderings do not entirely match the elevations." So it's just, there's a point that says whatever is greater detail in the conditions? Or did that get resolved? I guess that was my question.
No, it isn't resolved. We do have a condition that says whichever one has the greater detail, that'll be the one that, you know, that governs. Because in some ways, the renderings have more detail, and in some ways, for instance, the elevations have shutters, the renderings don't, but the renderings have a lot of like Victorian kind of detail.
I think it's all shutters on the renderings, like some of them.
Yeah, but maybe it's the other way around.
These don't have shutters, though.
It's the end, yeah, the end gable.
It was whatever was just given to us, those renderings that were just given to us.
They show shutters on certain elements, as you say, on the end gables, but like the front, there are no shutters, but then on the end units, you see shutters and.
I think there were shutters in different places. So maybe there needs to be.
This is something that wasn't discussed during, you know, the design review. I mean, you know, there should be some leeway in terms of shutters. I mean, how critical is that, you know? So, but.
There's a lot of detail also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just asking the question just to see if there is a resolution. I didn't really mean to ask it to say that it was a problem per se.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, no, that's not resolved.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are these condos or apartments?
There's never been a decision that I.
Are they condos or apartments?
We have the ability to make that decision going forward.
Go either way.
I mean, the market could change, this or that. Right now, we're clearly leaning towards apartments, but if there's a dramatic change in the economies of the market, we have the ability to recon, you know, go as condos.
So however the approval conditions or whatever would either be a management company and/or a condominium association, so that it's covered both ways?
Yeah, I think we called it a property owners association.
Owners association, depending on how the owners want to do it, right.
In case there were multiple owners or there wasn't a management company and they were, you know, hiring people kind of ad hoc more.
But every owner is going to have responsibility for all the common stuff, all right? Something like, you know, all the O and M and all that kind of stuff.
Someone owns an apartment building, they're responsible for it, right?
Right. Otherwise.
I own the five units there now, I'm responsible for plowing and doing all this, I just understood. I can't ask the tenants to plow.
I understand that that's as far as apartments are concerned, but if, I can see getting a little fuzzy if five units are apartments and then some, and then another five are sold as condos, it could get a little bit convoluted. And sometimes when that happens, things don't get done.
Well, I would be more comfortable if it was definitely one or the other. But, you know, that decision hasn't been made.
I don't think we ever considered the possibility of having a combination. It was either going to be an apartment complex or it was going to be a condominium association. So I never thought that we would split it and have one be a building, in other words, only master deed or phased condo, a certain component of it. So I don't think that was something we thought we would ever do, so.
Can you agree that there would be a management company if it was apartments?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so maybe instead of property owners association, we could just say, you know, the management company or, you know, the owners.
Well, I don't know, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak for Chris. You know, management companies charge a pretty big fees to run a building if someone that, like a young person that buys this or builds this out, wants to be the property manager himself and the owner, I think that's only fair to allow that person to be responsible for that stuff.
I think your language is adequate. The owners association, if he chooses to bring in an outside management company to assist him or to take over, but if the owners association is responsible, then he can help hold his feet to the fire.
Yeah.
I think the important thing is that the sale of any individual component or large component has to come with the full set of obligations that are common to this, right?
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't transfer, you know, a condo without them having the responsibility for what are the common elements of the upkeep and maintenance and stuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the public? Well, Bill, I mean, I looked at the plans and I guess this has been probably calculated more than once during the course of the evolution of the design, but, and I spoke to Laura about it, it looked like the 20% green space quote-unquote was really, you know, you're right up against it. But I assume you have determined that there is 20% unpaved and unbuilt-on area.
I know, I saw that.
Yeah, I know, I know we looked into that rather significantly toward the beginning right here. Minimum open space is 20% of the lot area, which is 12,240 square feet. We're proposing 16,243, which is 27%.
Okay, good.
We had a reaction on the art of conditions.
We had a reaction on the Art of Conditions about the language regarding the MBTA permission. And it says, you know, without that, the entire permit is void. And I think we'd like to have see that softened somewhat because while we have no reason to believe that they wouldn't agree to this, in fact, there are a lot of reasons why we think they would, because it gives them more access in the event of a fire, let's say, on a train, to get down there. It's conceivable that something like this could happen. They said, no, can't do it. We ought to be given the right to come up with an alternative rather than totally void the permit. For example, we've designed the project in such a way that access could go in either of the, show, Greg, show the path. These two paths would lead into, and it's quite conceivable that whoever acquires the abutting property, which will probably be sold and developed at some point, would find that an attractive thing, giving, and we foresee that in the future. In fact, you asked us, I think, at one point to come up with a scheme which would show how could these properties work together. And we did have a preliminary meeting at one point and we decided to keep moving forward because we were well down the path rather than stopping to, you know, try to do that at that point. But in other words, rather than just saying, if they don't agree, the project's thrown out the window, is just a little bit strong. And you, we would have to come back with an alternative acceptable to the board. And it's conceivable, it could be, that could be one of the alternatives, or something else.
As long as that property owner agreed.
Well, we don't know. Now, we'd have to come up with an alternative-
You would have to have their agreement.
And we would have to come up with an alternative that's acceptable to the board.
But I think it's fine.
Rather than just saying, you're done, you gotta, you throw it out the window.
It just has to be a fully developed alternative, not just, I can get you to the property line.
It's got to be one acceptable to you as a board.
Right.
And acceptable to the fire department as well.
Exactly. And if it's not acceptable to the fire department, it's not acceptable to you. I mean, that's the point. But to say, if for some reason the T says, we're not going to do that. Are we done? We've given it five years of work and we can't do anything? Could we modify it? Would we be able to come in and modify something? You know, whatever. But it's just a little bit too sweeping to say it voids the permit. In my belief, in my council's belief.
We get to that, we'll give it a little more discussion.
Okay.
Here's your one quick question about the fire truck's egress to it. Greg, can you show me where it's going to go on Drew Place? On Drew Place? Where's the step in the alternative egress?
So, it runs down to Drew Place. But what we're proposing is this back line here is the MBTA right of way. And so we have this pathway, this 10-foot paved pathway, that the fire truck could go down the MBTA right of way and turn onto Drew Place. What Chris is talking about is if the MBTA doesn't agree to this, and we've spoken to the MBTA preliminarily. We stopped those discussions because they wanted us to enter into easement agreements. And that was preliminary for the project without approval.
Yeah, they want to see you approved it, right.
So if that MBTA falls apart, we've designed both of these parking lots so that they could extend onto, you know, what is currently around its property.
It's private property, no?
It is. So I guess what Chris is asking is if the MBTA thing falls apart, that rather than the permit become void, which is what it says, that he be allowed to come in with an alternative. And the alternative would be to work with that property owner and come up with another access.
So nothing could really happen until that alternative was addressed?
That's right, correct, correct.
Excuse me, aren't there retaining walls at the end of those parking lots?
There are.
Yeah.
They could, they could be graded out with the permission of the abutting property owner.
Yeah. So if that never happened, this would be null and void, you couldn't-
Exactly. Unless we came up with another alternative.
Yeah, it just gives us the ability.
I don't know, helicopters, who knows?
That's what I'm saying. A helicopter, not real life.
Kind of limited.
You know, one up the Stockbridge.
We've got to put this a little bit in perspective, you know, it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime possibility event that there would be a fire of a magnitude which would create fire, not being able to exit the property the way they came in. And that's all the fire chief said. What if we get all blocked up, we've got medicars in there, police cars, and then there's another emergency somewhere else and we've got to head out to that and we can't get out back the road? And the likelihood of all of that happening is really so remote. They're dealing with property, I mean, they have the ability to go for anything with a big car. They could, they could drive down the easement as it is, you know, without having to ask anybody. Because in emergencies, you know, they don't have to call up and say, gee, Mrs., can I go across your lawn this afternoon because there's a fire on the other side?
But that's why they have these rules. So you don't have to get into a situation like that.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to put it in the perspective. We don't anticipate it really ever being used, but you have to prepare for it.
Right. The developer has to deal with this. And if every developer came in and now you're the fact that we may need a helicopter, I mean, that's going to the extreme, and I understand that, but-
I mean, a helicopter wouldn't hit past us, I don't think. We miss things, but I don't think we'd have a helicopter.
Well, I think it's at least prudent to give them the option to come up with a reasonable alternative.
But they probably would have if they could have before going to the MBTA, is my point.
Well, let me ask, now to the chief-
I think that kind of led us in that direction. It seemed very hard-nosed, but some of the ideas here are so imaginative, for lack of a better word, that to kind of bring the thing down to earth was, is kind of the job of the planning board. And to make it a little bit easier for them, instead of all of the, you know, sort of big concepts that we're dealing with here.
Yeah, I think the owners is still on the applicant's do it. The only difference is the first path, the first choice would be the MBTA.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
And one other question, if they are condos, if sold condos, they say half are condos, half are apartments. I just didn't quite get what you said there. Now, if the most apartments are turned into condos someday?
Sure, I would think so.
Sold?
Sure.
Well, unless they're, you know, the ones that are deed restricted, I'm not sure how that would all work. I mean, I think it would be, you know, you'd have to undo a deed restriction that's, you know, connected with mass housing. I don't know how you would do all that.
You're talking about the affordable?
The ones that are more affordable.
The affordable ones.
The affordable ones would be different.
It has to be sold as affordable condos.
So unless they're affordable, they are condos, they're apartments, or?
No, you get your affordable condos and apartments.
I think they'd want the whole development to be the same. So the affordable units are the same as the other units.
Okay.
So I think it gets complicated if you start switching around. I mean, I think at some point, someone's going to have to commit to what they want to actually do here and make sure that it meets all the regulations. And it's, it's kind of tough because it's been like a moving target in some ways, but that's, you know, part of the planning board's job, so.
Let me go back to your project schedule, and then we'll get to the conditions. It says, talks, it says the phasing schedule, what page do I have? Greg.
Which one?
On page three, this is Greg's letter.
Okay, yeah.
So on page three, item number three, down at the bottom.
Number three?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand. What that's telling me is the building A is weather tight before you rent out building B units.
That's correct. The intent is, is building A, which is at the front, we would start by constructing building C, move on to building B, we'd be able to start renting out units in building C.
And that's the migration?
And then we could not rent out units in building B until this was weather tight on the exterior, essentially finished exterior.
So the definition of weather tight is?
Side of the condos, roof.
Permanently completed.
Permanently completed exterior, correct. Wouldn't have your interior fit out, some of the utilities inside might not be done, but driving by, you would think it's a finished product on the exterior.
But all the major services would be stubbed out to the building?
Correct.
It's a nicer way of putting it than what I was going to do.
Do we want to hear what that was?
No, I was going to-
Okay.
I was going to suggest that you hold the, hold off on the building occupancy permits that you've already agreed to do there. Anything else before we start going through the conditions? Let's start going through conditions. Go ahead, the reader.
Shall we split the responsibility?
You could. I'll start with the first.
Tell us when you get tired.
Yeah, I think I have them.
And then we'll vote on whether you can use them.
Did they change from what you sent out?
Ah, there's just a little, one or two words, but basically they're the same.
Okay, it's in the packet here.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the bottom.
Oh, well, makes it easier. All right, I'll do the, about the first three pages and then I'll hand it to you, as I said, Steve.
Okay.
I move that the planning board approve the special permit with the following conditions. General requirements. Number one, all construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans submitted by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated entitled, Proposed Mixed Use Development, 50 Country Way, Assessor's Parcels 53-5-3 and 53-5-3B. Situate, Massachusetts dated October 13th, 2014, as revised through February 20th, 2015, with any additional revisions needed to conform to the conditions contained herein. The mixed use special permit, the renderings provided by email of March 5th, 2015, with respect to the buildings and with the site plan, roof plan, sheet A101, comma, level 1, comma, 2, and 3. Area plans, sheet A102, comma, A103, and A104, comma, and A, B, and C, building elevations. Sheets A105, comma, A106, and A107. By Dr. Paul Ford, PhD in architecture. Where renderings do not agree with the elevations, the developer shall provide the more detailed building treatment. For examples, shutters shall be installed as shown on the elevations. Landscaping shall be shown on the plans by Morse Engineering. Number two, where this mixed use special permit requires approval, permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval, permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town of Situate's Planning Board, or the Town of Situate Planning Boards, in parentheses, the Planning Board, or the Board, in parentheses. Approval of this mixed use special permit included but not limited to the Board of Selectment's approval of work in the public right of way of country way. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Number three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Situate zoning bylaw. All conditions of approval shall be inscribed on the mixed use special permit plan. Number four, the applicant shall mean the current applicant and all its successors in interest, in parentheses, the applicant, closed parentheses. This special permit laps, shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal under the general laws, Chapter 40A, comma, Section 17, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or, in the case of a special permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. The planning board may extend said period for good cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to the expiration of said period, which request shall provide a detailed description of the good cause necessitating an extension. Strike from the record, Richard says that was a paragraph of lots of lawyers. Number five, the total number of residential dwelling units on the site shall not exceed 30, in parentheses, 30. The housing mix shall be 16 1-bedroom units and 14 2-bedroom units. The total number of bedrooms shall not exceed 44, using the definition of a bedroom by Title V. Number six, a critical component of emergency access to the project is emergency access, egress, public access path within the MBTA right of way, adjacent to the property. If the MBTA does not agree to the emergency access egress path, the applicant will be allowed to submit a-
Alternative?
Yeah, thank you. Alternative proposal that must be approved by the planning board.
And the fire department.
And fire department. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
So something like the applicant shall be allowed to submit an alternative, this alternative must be approved by, and then?
The planning board and the fire department.
Okay, great.
All right, section Utilities, Parking, and Traffic. Number seven, unless and until a property owners association-
Richard, excuse me, did you read six or did I just fall asleep momentarily?
That's what we were just modifying.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I-
I shouldn't ask dumb questions.
We were modifying it a bit.
I prefer to think that you were in deep thought.
I was, obviously in very deep thought. Thank you.
All right. And then this is, unless and until a property owner, property owners association slash condominium association, and I'm sorry, I'll digress here, do we want to add management company? Slash management company is formed, or does it matter?
I'm thinking those, that phrase suffices, that covers it, you know?
Yeah, I think-
Management is kind of redundant. The owners association-
Management company gets hired by owners, right?
Yeah, it seems to me that this is doing, this is doing both. Because I think it's addressing what Ann was saying, is that it could, it's either a property owner's rental or it's a condominium.
Right.
Okay. So unless and until a property owners association slash condominium association is formed, maintenance and repair of the driveway, parking areas, stormwater management system, retaining walls, emergency egress, public access path, lighting, landscaping, and emergency access shall be the responsibility of the owner slash applicant.
What does that mean? Shouldn't it be just of the applicant?
Because the applicant, the applicant may not be the owner. I mean, if the, the project is for sale right now, so the applicant isn't probably going to be the owner.
The applicant is defined as the current applicant or any successors in interest. That's the definition of applicant, right?
Okay, we can leave it, yeah, we should really just have one-
I mean, you should use the definition, right?
Strike owner.
Applicant, capital A.
You should strike applicant and leave owner, whoever owns it. The applicant could be well gone, you know, and you have new owner.
I think it kind of makes more sense to talk about the owner, but-
I think I would agree with Mr. Ford, the owner component is probably more important. That someone could assign their rights under the permit to someone else, but yet not own the property. So I think you probably want to continue to include the, I think you'd leave it the way it is, owner applicant.
Yeah.
The way it covers both.
Doesn't the applicant include the owner?
I thought we'd just find-
There was a definition there.
Yeah, at the beginning. It says applicant and it shall mean its successors and assigns, number four.
Who become owner.
Yeah, the applicant shall mean the current applicant and all its successors in interest. The applicant.
Let's leave it as owner applicant.
Should you include in number seven, snow removal?
That's detailed further down about the, the maintenance of the emergency egress public access path. Or do you mean, just in general, if you want to call that-
Maintenance of the driveway is includes snow removal, it's inclusive. I mean, you could say sweeping it and a lot of words, but maintenance is-
I think you can call it out, including snow removal.
Yes, please.
Sure.
After this winter.
So the emergency egress slash public access path, comma, lighting, comma, landscaping, comma, snow removal, and emergency access shall be the responsibility of the owner slash applicant. Number eight, no new underground irrigation system shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the Board of Selectmen on October 8th, 2014. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied by onsite sources at the expense- sources at the expense of the property owner. Number nine. All parking will be constructed as shown on the plan, as shown in the table on the site layout plan, in parentheses, Sheet three of the proposed mixed-use development plan, end parentheses. Marketing material advertising the sale of the residential unit shall include the parking limitations noted in this table.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
Uh, going back to number six with the, um, the Planning Board approval of the alternative to the MBTA access, um, does the Board want to see a public hearing for that, or just, you know, just an informal approval?
You mean if the T, if the T does not agree then...
Yeah, if you have to come in with a whole new, um, approval for that.
I wouldn't think it would personally need a, a public hearing, but we would want to sign off on it. That's my thought.
Okay.
But wait.
Well...
Why wouldn't you want a...
Why wouldn't we want a public hearing?
Well, you have to have...
I mean, because there will be a butters here, right?
This changes everything.
I mean, there's going to be butters to the property and all that, so...
Not if you have permission of the person who owns the property at this point.
What's that?
I mean, if you have permission, which you'll obvi- obviously need of the person who owns that, that parcel that, you know, you're, you're now proposing to drive across. That'll be, you know, that's, that's a given. You need, you've got to have that, right?
You know, part of the package.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know what you really would get from...
So are we concerned with the butters then to that parcel? I, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
The most transparent way of doing it is to turn habit as a public hearing.
Yeah, we did, we did this whole thing as a public hearing. I don't know why this particular element wouldn't be done as well.
Okay.
Just...
I mean, if it was an option that we'd be voting on it now, it would be a public hearing.
All right.
Were we dying?
So we're going to change, are we going to, what, we're going to change number six now? Do you want, the applicant shall at a public hearing be allowed to submit? Just add the words at a public hearing.
Well, we, we don't want you submitting the, the alternative at a public hearing, but, um, maybe we could say this alternative must be approved by the Planning Board, um, following a public hearing on a special permit modification.
Okay.
Yes, fine.
Okay. So you're going to put the word of at a public hearing, approved at a public hearing by the Planning Board?
Well, I was just going to say at a, following a public hearing.
Approved by the Planning Board following a public hearing?
Well, I think you have to have the public hearing first, right?
Yeah, or at the public hearing.
Well, whatever.
Oh, I'm just asking, right?
Yeah, well, I think, um, approval follows the public hearing. You, you would apply for a special permit modification and then you'd have, you'd have a vote after that.
Okay.
After a public hearing.
Yeah.
All right. So we, we completed number nine. There were no questions on that, right? All right, number ten. All buildings, parking, walkways, paths, and required signage shall meet all requirements of the ADA and Situate Commission on Disabilities. I don't know if I should spell that out, the American Disability Act?
We do know that.
Number eleven. Traffic from the site shall be monitored from six months to two years after occupancy to verify traffic is in accordance with the projections for the site. The Planning Board's consulting traffic engineer's analysis of the impact of the project on existing town roads was based on the project's generation of two hundred and seventy additional vehicle trips on an average weekday, with twenty-five additional trips during the weekday morning peak hour and fifty-two additional trips during the weekday evening peak hour. In parentheses, VAI letter to John Chesia of February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, end parentheses. No uses shall be established, which increases the project's total trip generation above these amounts. Number twelve.
I just have to ask, uh, does that mean, uh, let's say it's, you would see two hundred and seventy-one additional vehicle trips instead of two seventy, you'd shut down the project? I mean, what are the consequences of this?
Yeah, I kind of wondered that myself.
Well, I mean, it's a special permit. It, you know, you're out of compliance with a special permit and someone would probably have to bring it to the attention of the building commissioner to enforce it.
Okay, all right.
I mean, this was recommended by the town's traffic engineer because these roads are, are not huge and they have limits for the amount of, of traffic that they can carry.
Any other questions?
What would they do if they overran the limitations?
Well, I think that's why...
Start blowing up cars.
You'd have to check in with, with, probably with us or with, before leasing, say you had like three restaurants in there. You might go over this presumably, before leasing to a restaurant. You know, you'd kind of need to be aware and, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they...
Think about it.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay.
Number twelve. Trash removal operations shall be monitored from six months to two years after occupancy to verify that there are no safety issues with trash removal as significant backup distances are proposed. Trash removal operations shall be reworked if safety is found to be an issue, uh, in, or start bracket, recommended by the traffic study, close bracket. Number thirteen. All electrical, telephone, cable, and similar utilities shall be located underground. Number fourteen. The applicant shall obtain the approval of the Planning Board through the Town Planner if minor changes from the plan and/or details are needed for lighting, signage, or landscaping. Want to be Mr. Affordability?
Sure. Okay, section on affordability. Number fifteen. All affordable units shall meet the requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing that's inventory...
Inventory, yeah.
Through the state's local initiative program, forens, inferens, LIP. Number sixteen. According to Section five sixty point seven D, the number of one- and two-bedroom affordable units shall be in the same proportion as the market rate units. Two affordable units shall contain one bedroom and two shall contain two bedrooms. Number seventeen. The affordable units shall be constructed so that the first is completed and available for occupancy before the seventh market rate unit, second affordable unit before the fourteenth market rate unit, the third affordable unit before the twentieth market rate unit, and the last affordable unit before the twenty-sixth market rate unit. Number eighteen. The applicant or their representative shall be responsible for preparation of the LIP, Local Action Units, application for the affordable units to be submitted to DHCD by the municipality in perens chief elected official. Forms and assistance will be available from the Planning Department. Uh, next section, phasing and public benefits. The phasing of the project shall be, according to the applicant's proposed phasing schedule, attached to this approval. An emergency egress and public walkway shall be required. Both shall connect from Country Way through the site to an improved emergency egress slash public access path from the site to Drew Place. The Property Owners Association slash condominium, condominium master deed documents shall include a statement that the emergency access and public walkway must be maintained by the association. Number twenty. Construction of the path shall include additional related improvements as follows. A, within the site, emergency access egress shall be over the driveway and the island in the parking area at the rear of the site. The island shall be improved with pervious pavement capable of supporting a fire truck along the access route and four inch, inches of loam and seed throughout, with movable pylons along the front side to discourage parking. Cape Cod berm shall be replaced with sloped granite curb. A no parking, fire, and emergency access sign shall be installed at the front of the island. B, the public walkway on the site shall be constructed of concrete and brick as shown on the plans with the site, within the site, except within the island at the rear of the parking lot. C, above. Oh, is that first part A above? So, okay. So, little I, B little I, permanent easements shall be recorded, granting the public access over the walkway. Little, two little I's. An informational sign indicating public access path or similar shall be installed of a style coordinated with other public wayfinding signs in town indicating the path is public, perens, or funding to cover the cost of same at the discretion of the Planning Board, end perens, and identifying some possible destinations. Three little I's. A vertical granite curb of a minimum six inch, six inches in height shall be used along a walk to maintain vertical separation from the parking area.
Yeah, let's, let's, we finish the paragraph.
I'm sorry?
Fencing also, I want a question.
Good question on that?
We finish that paragraph going up through the five, and then we'll talk about...
Okay. Four, fencing shall be used to separate the path from multi-unit buildings. And five, bike racks shall be provided at each building as per Situate zoning bylaws, Section seven sixty point seven E.
Okay, I'd like Greg to address the provision requirement for granite.
Address what?
The requirement for granite. Uh, that's been asserted. It wasn't here before. It's something new and it requires a dramatic increase in expense for the project. And I want Greg to address the issue.
Sure. This, um, this was a condition Laura brought us, brought up to us the other day. Our plans since day one, which is well over a year ago, have always been precast concrete curbing. Your bylaw doesn't have a requirement for granite. That's what we had always proposed.
Wait, but this is just the path.
I, speaking the other day, I think the intent was the whole site. I don't know if that continues on.
Then number twenty, it says construction of the path shall include the additional related improvements. So I'm reading everything under that as being only related to the path.
I think there may be something more about vernic, vertical granite curb in here somewhere, but I, um, it's not here.
Okay.
But right now, we're talking the path.
Okay. I guess if you're going to have granite curb on one side of the, the parking lot at the pathway, on the other side of the parking lot, in that case, Richard, we'd be having precast concrete curb. You, you want it to match. And we had, Laura had mentioned the, the whole site, I thought, the other day. Anyways, we've always depicted it as concrete curbing. This board has never had an issue with that. It was never, um, it, it was never raised as an issue by John Chesia that I'm aware of. DPW commented regarding granite curbing as part of our subdivision project. They never commented on granite curbing as part of our project, as far as I'm aware of. DPW, in their review of it, does talk about our concrete curb. They are aware that it was concrete curb in their review. It adds significant cost to Mr. Ford's project.
I, if I may, when we were talking about the new MBTA access, that rather than, as you had said, the squishy, um, precast concrete should be, that area should be replaced with granite curbing so that if something rolls over it, it's not going to get smushed. Is, is that my understanding?
Well, yeah, that was going to be sloped granite curbing.
Right.
I think we can live with that. We didn't challenge that, but, but for curbing everywhere else, we, it's an expense that's...
That may be a special situation. I think I, I understand, and I know the DPW understands that the granite curbing is a lot more expensive. The value of it to the town is that it wears well, it looks good for a long time, it doesn't get chipped the way the concrete gets chipped. So it's really the discretion of the Board.
That would never be there.
There's no, uh, possibility the town would ever plow this site, though.
Right.
It's not as, it's not, it's not like a subdivision with a roadway that might be accepted at some point.
It's not for that reason. It's for the reason of just the durability and the general public using the site and having a site that looks like it's, um, in good condition, that, that is, because of the materials used, that it's relatively easy to maintain and it's going to hold up better.
Okay.
So...
I agree with all that. It's just not, it doesn't seem to me to be the town's issue in this particular case.
Greg has advised me, it's inconsistent. They haven't used it in other projects he's been familiar with, and suddenly why, you know, we're trying to keep affordable.
We're really not trying to, um, to, um, make you guys into like the martyrs of the commercial development world, uh, or, or anybody for that reason, but, um, it's under the town's purview because you are the arm of the town that reviews commercial development and are responsible for keeping it at a certain standard. So in that sense, um, the town isn't maintaining it, but you're not the Public Works Department, you're the Planning Board approving private development. So, you know, and that, that's, you know, how you're connected with it, even though it's not, you know, a town project.
Where do you envision putting this granite curb?
I think the notion is it's throughout the development.
Yeah, I think if you're going to have it in one area, you would want to have it throughout the development to make it look consistent.
You say that's addressed later on somewhere?
It's not addressed.
Well, for, for example, where you have a, a concrete walkway, which is the lower side of that main access route where the parking is?
Here?
Right.
Going straight back.
Right. I mean, my experience has been that that's very well handled by a hunched concrete curb cast as part of the walkway.
That's what we have proposed, actually. We have, um, we have cast in, cast in place as part of a sidewalk, I believe. Yeah, CIP cast in place.
Okay.
As part of the sidewalk. And that's how we label it as well.
So, putting a separate curb some, in, in a situation like that, again, I've had experience with this. You, you run the risk of water infiltration, freezing, heaving, and ending up with the curb and the walkway at two different elevations, which is a tripping hazard, which, you know, makes it difficult for wheelchair access, for example, which is not a good situation.
Well, there are certainly some downsides to the granite curb, and if the Board wants to see concrete curb throughout all the commercial development, that's, you know, that's good to know. I, you know, certainly won't bring it up again.
Well, no, it's only...
It's only brought up because of the, you know, the, um, better quality of it.
Yeah. No, I, I don't, I don't disagree that it is better quality, but I honestly have seen that situation where you've got a walk that directly abuts a paved area of parking like this one does, that, in that one specific case, not, not perhaps in other areas of the, of the site plan. That, that integrally cast concrete hunched curb is a, is a pretty good detail, I think.
Seems it would increase our liability. I mean, I don't like the idea of having the liability of a different levels, and if you're telling me that that's what happens, that's kind of serious.
Um, I have seen it.
Yes, okay.
If I'm, I'm trying to understand this. So the sidewalk would just curve down to the street, correct? It would be basically one piece?
But it keeps going.
But it keeps going.
To what, eighteen inches below grade, something like that?
Correct. I probably have a detail of it on the plans here. Basically, rather than constructing a, a curb, you know, which is just one, one stone, and then pouring concrete behind it, this here, the curb and the sidewalk behind it, they're all poured at one time. So there's absolutely no seam, um, created. Here you go, cast in place, concrete curb. So it's all poured at one time, so there's, there's no seam created where you'd get a settlement or a differential.
But there is an elevation to it. It's not curved.
It's a vertical, a vertical curb, a minimum of six inches in height.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm not, I don't, I'd have a problem with a curb, but not if it's a six-inch elevation.
Yeah, no, it's curb with a B, as opposed to a V. Curb. C U R B as opposed to C U R V E. It's not, it's not curved.
Any other thoughts?
Uh, well, it's, we're going to face this issue again and... Well, it's, we're gonna face this issue again and again, right? So, we've gotta decide one way or the other. And you, so what's, what really was the feedback from the DPW on this?
Well, they, they like the granite, they recognize that the town doesn't have any rules that support the use of granite, so they said it's really up to you whichever way you wanna go with it.
Do you have a, a completely ballpark figure of the difference?
At this site, we're estimating between 15,000 and 20,000.
Yeah, 'cause there is a lot of curbing.
The DPW reviewed this, and they didn't, they didn't bring it up to us. Now, you're telling us, someone told you, but it sounds to me like it's something that might have happened over the weekend, it's all news to us. And I also wanna question the fencing, I'm not really clear what you mean by fencing.
Before you say something else on the bottom.
All right.
Parenthetically, Laura, I will, I will definitely, from now on, support concrete curb on subdivision roadways that may, may be accepted by the town in the future.
I think the subdivisions, I know the, the DPW has, you know, they have different opinions about that, and I think that's another whole, you know...
We've had a lot of discussions about that.
Right, right. I mean, I'm not like anti-concrete curb, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
You mean granite?
I'm sorry, granite.
Good, okay.
Good God, did I say concrete? No, I meant I would support granite curbing.
Okay, great.
For subdivision roadways.
That sounds like a good trade-off.
Well, and...
No, I'm just...
And in this particular case, I remember, I think, when, one of the times, one of the many meetings, Greg talking about the, the concrete curb and us, like, thinking that we, it was okay. I mean, I personally like the granite curb, I think it's gonna, it would be nicer, but I think at this, it may be a little unfair to ask them to do it at such a late stage. Do you feel the same, or?
I didn't have any expectation one way or the other, so...
I think the reason it came up was that in one of the sets of plans, you know, several sets ago, it said, "Vertical granite curb," and it, I assumed it was a mistake, I have to admit. I assumed it was a mistake, but I thought, well...
You didn't say concrete.
What a concept, yeah, so, so that was actually, you know, part of the, you know, genesis of this whole thing, so.
Well...
I apologize if I went too far with that.
Maybe this is setting a bad precedent, but it seems like going forward, for any new development, it's a commercial development, you know, whether the MBTA parcel is an example or anything, that the granite curbing should be made upfront, that that's a condition or a requirement. I think that's, I would support that. Does that make sense?
For new projects.
For anything, I mean, I like the, I like the fact that the DPW is saying this is what we should do, and I think it, I totally support you that it's a nicer look, it's a better quality for the town, it makes it nicer development, I'm just worried that, I think, in fact, I wanna say, I remember asking Greg the question about curbing, I don't know, months ago or something, and we talked about it being a concrete curb, and I thought we were all okay, so...
Is there granite curb at the entrance?
Yes, I believe so.
I don't think so.
I don't believe so, I believe it's, at this point, I think it's consistent throughout, because it's not really a curved...
It's concrete right here coming in, out here where we're closing up on countryway, that's obviously granite, it matches the countryway, but, yeah, as you pull into the site, it's concrete.
Is there, is there a curve there?
Is there a transition?
Or is it just an angle?
Yeah, there's a very small radius here, it's maybe a 10-foot radius, I don't have it labeled on the plan, but...
The concrete curb exists.
With concrete curbing, correct.
Is the board interested in some kind of a transition there where, you know...
I would say at a minimum, that's probably what we ought to look at, is, you know, the entrance in, we've done it in all of our other, like, subdivisions and stuff, had a granite transition into it, and I don't know how difficult that would be at that particular location, but I can't imagine it'd be that difficult. Right? Just to have a transition into the site, and then find a natural transition to concrete.
Is there gonna be handicapped access at that curb? And then, if it's a unit, you can't put a top through a concrete curb.
Yeah, so what it is, is at the, right here, we've got granite out on countryway, and there's a sidewalk there, so the sidewalk comes down flush with the ground, so it's granite right up to that sidewalk where you'd have the ADA ramp, and then on the other side of the sidewalk where it picks up going into the site, which is a straight piece, that's where the concrete picks up, it's a straight piece. So, from the street, in, in the curve here, into the site, into the sidewalk, that, that's already granite.
So, is there a granite transition down?
To flush with the ground, exactly.
It's granite, it's not concrete.
Correct. And then where it picks up on the backside of the sidewalk, that's where it becomes concrete onto the site.
What's the thinking of the board in the sense of preferring one way or the other?
Let me chip on. I think my position in terms of granite curb is pretty well-known, I'm a Cape Cod person, right? It makes more sense, and it gives you more flexibility when you gotta go over, if you got narrow, and you're concerned about traffic flow again.
But that's not on the table.
I'm not suggesting that it was, I'm just saying, but that's my, my position, I have no problem at all with concrete all the way through this.
I'd just like to make sure we have a clear granite curb transition into the, into the site. I think that's, I'd like to keep that sort of standard going.
Right, I think it, I think it does curve across the sidewalk, and then it seems to be a logical place to transition on the backside of the sidewalk to the concrete, otherwise, now you're talking about probably bringing the granite all the way in around, you know, to the parking space thing, so where do you stop?
Where do you transition from the granite into the concrete? That, I mean, it is the logic one, because that's where it's coming up from being flush with the ground.
You said that's granite anyway.
Yeah, this is granite.
This is all granite.
And then it starts right here, because the sidewalk is flush with the ground surface.
It's gonna be flat accessible.
So, the curb into the site right here is granite, and then it goes into flat, and where it starts right here at the straight point, that's where we have labeled as concrete curbing there.
And how, how straight far back does that go? I can't really see that from here.
Well, it goes, it goes from here, comes in, and wraps into the first parking space, and then it runs from there, so I mean, that distance, I can see...
This is the PCC, so they're wrapping it around here. So, the other option would be if this was all granite, you could stop it like right here. But, but what he's saying is...
What's the other?
He's saying this is flush, right here.
What does it look like on this side? Is that grassed?
This, okay. I don't know, does the granite go this way? That's a good question, Greg.
It does.
Like, as you cross, like, the, where Morning Glories is?
Yeah.
So, you cross the driveway, the entrance, what's on the other side?
This, this is granite, this piece here is wrapped in granite at Morning Glories. It's sloped granite, and it's kind of fallen apart over the years, but it's sloped granite as opposed to where it's buried.
Maybe it would look better if it was granite up to here.
Would there be any, any interest in redoing that, you know, just the entrance to make the whole entrance look...
What I'm thinking is just, like, can we, can we, do we have to go all the way here? Can we just sort of mirror this on this side, just to add sort of that feel of granite entrance?
Can you go partway on the opposite side and then transition, or is that just gonna look too strange?
To get, to get a uniform feel, just kind of wrap this granite right here in this granite, is that what you're talking about?
Kind of going past the walkway.
Further down, further in on the other side?
Come over here, Greg, maybe you can see it on Richard's thing.
Well, it's the same plan, but...
Yeah, I know, but I can't see what he's doing over there. We're, we're thinking is, so this is granite here, right?
Yeah, but it's, he said it's sloped granite.
What's sloped granite, is there a way to do kind of a similar, a mirror image on this side or something?
You could run it into like a point in here where it becomes...
Mirror image on your side.
Or you just run it around here, so that you lose the visual effect, you'll see the hand right up to this point.
Yeah, I'd almost prefer it, wouldn't you actually, Greg, like, wrap it around to the first, and then stop it here, and then pick up the curb from there?
Yeah, probably, because that's, that's actually, yeah, that's...
Yeah, 'cause here's the sidewalk, so from that corner, that would be the...
Up to the entrance?
Yeah. That would be acceptable to me.
Would make a really nice-looking entrance.
And then, and then leave the rest of it, you know, as the board concrete, whatever.
Right, and then, I would like to, just for Laura's, going forward, though, if we make that a condition, a standard, that would...
It's really good to know, because the MBTA can have similar...
Yeah, we're gonna face the same issues with these other developments, so...
I just feel like, it's like, kind of unfair at the last minute.
It really was on their plans.
He says it wasn't.
But, well, we can, we can spend hours looking for it, and we probably will.
So, is there...
We can consensus.
I think that having that entrance like that, making it granite curb on the, the two entrance pieces, to make it a really nice, yeah...
Yeah, just to give it that visual coming...
Presentation as you come into the development, then you'd still have the sloped granite on the island, right? Because of the, because you need that for the...
We're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, you'd be fine with that.
Okay.
This is out here.
We'd wrap it, we'd wrap it to the first parking spot.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm okay with that.
I think we've got an agreement.
Yeah.
I don't know where we write that, but I'm actually reading other stuff right now.
Other things that are gonna be coming in on a draw, so, I guess, we're getting near the witching hour. You had a question on the fencing?
I'm not really clear on what you mean by fencing, do we have that on the plan, Greg?
We have, we talked about with the pedestrian pathway.
Yes.
Kind of created delineation of the pathway in front of building B, as people walk by, and the floor discussed, putting some fencing up or some shrubbery up.
Yes.
And we kind of incorporated both of those, the landscape architect, he had plantings along the front facade, but he does have small fence pieces out in the front here.
I see, okay.
It's an ornamental fence to delineate that walk.
I'm fine, I didn't quite understand it, that's all, just a question I had, okay.
Okay, we're good with that?
Let's go through the next set of little I's.
Okay.
Speed read.
I'll do it.
Let me talk to Adam.
Okay, section...
It looks like we're gonna run a few minutes late, is that, is that okay with you? I figured you'd be agreeable, but I would ask...
Of course, thank you.
Section C, continuing on, section C, "The following improvements and related items are required for the emergency egress slash public access path in the MBTA right-of-way. One, the surface of this portion of the emergency egress slash public access path shall be improved with pervious pavement 10 feet wide with 1-inch gravel shoulders on each side. Two..."
1 foot gravel shoulders.
Oh, 1 foot, I'm sorry, thank you. 1 foot gravel shoulders on each side. Two, "The condominium or property owner's association shall be required to maintain this portion of the path, including snow plowing, and the master deed or owner's agreement shall include a description of this maintenance, comma, documentation that the MBTA, MBTA will allow it, comma, and indicate who will provide it. Three, the plan must show all area required in or adjacent to the proposed emergency access, required to be traveled by a fire truck as shown by the area under the wheels and within the expected travel path as per the plan, as part of the path. This path shall be improved with hardening and/or other material as needed to support and provide access for a fire truck as specified by the fire department. Four, existing trees in the MBTA right-of-way that must be removed to construct the emergency egress shall be replaced in the right-of-way or on the site with new trees of a minimum of 3-inch caliper DBH. These shall be in addition to the new trees shown on the landscaping plan. Five, lighting, including seven fixtures to match those along the MBTA path located along the path on the MBTA property and the site."
Shall be, I guess.
Shall be located, is that it?
Yeah.
Shall be located along the path on the MBTA property and the site. The applicant must provide all necessary electrical connections for the lighting.
So, let's stop, you got any questions?
Should we stop in here?
Okay, let's stop here. I think you are the item on the agenda for the 26th from 8:30.
It's actually 9:15.
9:15 till...
Till, whenever.
Whenever?
Till closing.
Oh, okay, it's common drive countryways. So, it's 9:15 till the end.
Yep.
All right.
Now, the other thing I would ask is if you've got any comments of any, any of the other sections as we go forward, you can let Laura know, so we'll know them ahead of time.
We don't anticipate any at this time, we review them pretty carefully, so it should be clear silent, so...
So, will somewhere in here integrate this conversation about the granite curbing?
Yeah, we'll integrate.
Somewhere after 20.
I need, I need a motion to continue because it's 20.
Are you happy?
Yes, have it.
You anticipated this?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for 50 countryway until March 26, 2015, at 9:15 PM.
Okay. Hold it in favor.
Is it appropriate to pay a bottle of champagne?
Yes.
Several?
If you bought it originally, you would have been able to...
And you bought it originally, we might have been done by now. That was just a joke.
Bill, what's, all right, this is continued to the 26th, how much time after the 26th do we have to file? Huh? Are we okay, you know what I'm talking about?
We're covered that way.
We are?
We have an email or something from them?
This doesn't really show, it's the way it's gonna be, it doesn't show the walk and all that.
No.
It shows this little hoop right here, so it's, it's really weird.
It's not detailed enough. The same way, like, they're showing the parking line, Morning Glories, being paved, and that's not really even in the proposal.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I like the floating train, I'm liking that.
All right, that's a deal.
The floating train. It's like the Polar Express.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. When I first saw it, it took me a while to look at that.
Yeah, I don't even know why he put it in here.
At some point, there must have been tracks and everything in there, and it, you know, and he took a lot of the detail out. Looks like it's actually an ocean-bound train.
Yeah. I was saying, Bill, this, this area right here is all just...
Well, right now, we're running.
But like, Bill, like, this is just recommended, right? This parking area here?
No, according to our approvals, that's the greater detail, so they have to do that.
That's not even their property, if you look at it.
That's immaterial.
Look at it.
Hey, how you doing?
Hello.
I had more granite curbs.
I see your, your new development, Louie in the back. I do like the granite curbs, I just...
I do, too.
I'll find it, it's in the plan somewhere.
But, I'm not joking, I do...
Unless it was a barrage, no, but I don't, I don't think it was.
At one point in all of our meetings, I do remember asking, and I do remember Greg saying...
That might have been why, when it popped out, it was like, oh my God, they really, you know, they really, like, shot itself real quick.
It's on a slope, and you don't go up into it.
So, anyway.
Oh, wait, for, for, what was it? Introduce your team.
Thank you, Mr. Limbacher, good evening, everyone. As you may remember, my name is Adam Brodsky, I live here in Cituad, my office is in Hingham, I'm with Rowan, Tacho, and Morgan. I'm here with Terry Conroy Senior to Myron, Joe Lynch, also of Conroy Development, and you likely know Don Nagel, another attorney here in Cituad, who's also part of the... the second project to be permitted in the VBO in Green Bush. This is the redevelopment of the MBTA parcel. Do we want to wait for Mr. Vogel, or?
Why don't we wait for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Here he is.
Right on time. There's a superb sense of timing. Your team will introduce their consultant for, I don't know what the official title is for EDC. Laura, I'll say a few words, and then we'll make questions in the board. That's how we'll be.
Oh, well, great. We didn't realize there was going to be someone else here. We're here, really, to present a concept of a mixed-use project for this property. We've come up with a conceptual design. We have some questions regarding the bylaw. The bylaw, particularly with respect to this property, which was not originally in the Village Business Overlay District. The bylaw has certain aspects which are less than clear. We've worked through this. We've consulted with Laura. We've consulted with other people in the town, so we have what we believe to be an appropriate concept for the project. However, before we go into the, the actual design phase, we're here in front of you to get the board's sense of whether we're in fact on the right track. Back to the drawing board. So you're likely familiar with the property. It's 2.5 acres. It's presently the, a portion of the MBTA parking lot. We have a site plan, and you have copies in front of you. And our principal frontage is on, you know, what we're calling the old Driftway, and there's some issue with respect to nomenclature. When we talk about the Driftway, I understand it's in, what's really the, the new Driftway from the Rotary to downtown. This is off of it. The Green Bush station is here. So our principal frontage is on, I'm gonna refer to it as Old Driftway. We do have driveway access at the rear of the property on the new Driftway. Town, Solways Transfer Station is here.
And so is the border I'm looking at here, the sort of this cutout, that's the 2.5 acres?
That's, that's correct. Essentially, here, that's the, well, it's not.
It's the Celtic cause or whatever?
Celtic cause, yeah.
Yes, Celtic cause. Thank you. And so the, the concept is a 54 unit, mixed-use project, 54 residential units comprised of 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units. These are going to be rental units. Under the bylaw, we're required to have 15% affordable, so we'd have 46 market units and 8 affordable. We are proposing 20 units per 40,000 square foot, which kicks us into the bonus density provisions under the Village Business Overlay bylaw, and so we're obligated to provide significant improvements, providing public benefits, compensation for that additional density. As you may know, the, the underlying zoning here is commercial, so it's slightly different than Mr. Ford's, which I believe is general business. It's, this is commercially zoned property. When we first came to the town, the original concept was, was two separate buildings, obviously with the mixed-use retail business up front, and there was a, you might've seen another plan floating around with sort of a separate building. What we've done here, and this was at the recommendation of our architect, you know, we're trying to create a sustainable green design, we're trying to create an efficient building system. So the idea was to bring these buildings closer together, and so this, I just wanted to be clear, this is the, the front of the building here, this is where we're gonna propose our retail use. This is gonna be residential. There's, we're proposing a, a walkway that may be converted to a driveway through this rear here, but this is gonna connect on the second floor. So the architect said, listen, you really want an efficient building here rather than two separate buildings. Bring them closer together and create a connection. So what you're seeing here is essentially the, the foundation for the, the front building, the rear building. There is gonna be a connection proposed on the second floor. That's got some ramifications which we want to talk to you about.
So how, are they both the same height?
Yes.
The same height?
These are three-story buildings. The site actually has very some interesting topography. It actually slopes fairly steeply from back to front, and so our, our conceptual design is gonna have to take that into account to stay under the maximum building height required under the bylaw.
And just, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just want to make sure I understand. So the retail in the front is first-floor retail?
Correct. So, so what we're proposing is essentially this entire.
Units above it.
Entire, entire approximately 9,000 square feet retail.
On the first floor.
First floor, front of the building, residential above it.
Right, okay.
And then the, essentially the back building is all residential.
Gotcha.
Now, it's, the, the, the architect's concept is also designed around a significant amount of green space, which is gonna be centered in the site. The idea is to have as much green space available to the, the unit owners, and actually to be available for public access through here, through here, and I'll talk a little bit about what we're proposing here. Based upon our unit count, we're proposing 115 parking spaces, including parking in front for the retail, and I'm gonna talk about that. And generally, although, probably we don't need to get into too much detail, the concept for public benefits is really to sort of operate the front door of the property and create an attractive connection to the Green Bush station. So we've got a, sort of a public open space seating, planting, this is gonna be a very attractive entrance to the property and to create a real connection, attractive connection to Green Bush, which presently, I think, is just a striped crosswalk and some concrete sidewalks.
It's mostly a wall of snow right now.
That, that's correct. And I, I don't know if you'd be helped by, I did bring copies of, of the, the VBO bylaw. You probably have your own copies with you. Do you want me to hand out copies? But I do have complete copies, if that would be helpful.
We handed one out at the beginning.
I think we got it.
Right, I do have copies if, if you need it.
Someone just memorized it.
You're speaking to yourself right now.
So, so one of the, one of the, the issues that we're faced is, is obviously, we're not the second project coming through, but there's not a lot of precedent as to how this board interprets and applies the bylaws. And we have three principal concerns regarding the design review standards, and then a fourth concern, which I want to talk about. And I want to begin because we took a very hard look at the introductory language to that design review standard provision. It's 560.8. It's on page 78 of the bylaw. And it says that the, the planning board shall consider the extent to which the application satisfies the general standards enumerated at section 750 and the design review standards detailed below. Just, you may know, obviously, you know, section 750 is your design review committee provision. So, so the introductory language to the design review standard provision says the planning board shall consider the extent to which the application satisfies the general standards. We, we interpret that as, as really giving the board flexibility in the interpretation, applicability of the design review standards. And, and we're here to kind of talk about that and make sure that, you know, that, that we're on the, the right tracks, since this is somewhat new ground. And so the, the first issue that arises with respect to the design review standards has to do with front setback. That's section C1. And it's interesting because there, there are minimum and there are maximum setbacks. And then there are minimum and maximum setbacks having to do with Country Way and the Driftway, and then there are minimum and maximum setbacks for all the streets in Green Bush. One of the problems we have is that Driftway is not defined in the bylaw. Again, the bylaw was written before this property was put into the district. I, I know that the bylaw was amended at Supremetown meeting last year to change some of the definitions. So we got a property that doesn't have frontage on the new Driftway, and, and we, we've interpreted that as to mean, you know, that we're kind of, all of the streets in Green Bush. And our assumption was, when you said Driftway, you meant on the Driftway. That, and we're here to talk about that. I know that Ann's giving me a look. I mean, I, I, without a definition, without a definition in the bylaw, we're at something of a loss. As applying all those other streets in Green Bush, then we're talking about a 10-foot minimum and a 25-foot maximum setback. I, I think the obvious intent of this was to create the village setting that you have in North Citrus and on Front Street. You want the buildings right up, up close to create that village. There, there is no existing village setting here. The desire is obviously to create a, a village setting. The, the problem that we have, as you're gonna see on this particular property, is that it's not really economically viable to put the building right here. What we proposed is, is moving the setback 80 feet from the street and putting parking in here for retail.
80? Is that what you said?
80 feet. So we, we have the 10-foot minimum setback, but we're talking about essentially relaxation on the maximum setback, and then we've got to talk about parking within the setback. And, and the reason we're proposing this is that we've been told clearly by our architect, by our marketing specialist, that we need parking in front of those retail uses, particularly since we're proposing 9,000 square feet of retail. That if you put the retail right up on the street, you're gonna have parking, you're gonna, you have commercial parking right in front of the residential units. It, it's not gonna work, and it really's gonna undermine the economics, because the only, the only way legitimate mixed use in this district is if we have real viable retail, not vacant stores, I mean, you know. And, and so, so from an economic perspective, we've gotta put that parking in front of the retail, because otherwise, we're not gonna be able to get the kinds of solid tenants that we want and need to make this project work and actually to create, you know, a mixed business, uh, uh, community in this, in this portion of Green Bush, which I think, I mean, it's something of a blank slate. I mean, we don't have existing structures like in North Citrus or in Front Street, or even some portions of Country Way. This is kind of a clean slate. And, and so, we believe that.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute? Cause, so you're saying this is retail parking in the front?
That's correct.
Will there, will the residential parking be dedicated residential parking? In other words, it's, it's numbered and, and it belongs to the residences?
Certainly something we can consider.
Yes.
Absolutely. We're trying to, we're trying to create that separation between retail and, and residential here. And by putting that building right here and, you know, putting the, the retail parking on the side of the building, it, it just simply doesn't, doesn't work for the site and undermines our ability to really get those solid retail tenants that we want and need for the project. Again, we believe that you've got flexibility in the interpretation and application of the bylaw to accommodate that. We, we need, you know, I mean, I, we don't think that there needs to be necessarily be a formal waiver, but I mean, that may be something that you can, so, we don't know procedurally how you handle this, since it's, as I said, the second project in front of you and the first project in this portion of the Green Bush VBO. So the, the second, the second issue is parking within the setback. That's covered under section C3 of that provision of the bylaw. It says, no parking in the front setback in North Citrus, Green Bush on Country Way, and the Driftway. So we got this, this Driftway issue. Does that mean that that relates only to projects with frontage on the new Driftway? Does that mean that that's not applicable to us? I mean, I think a reasonable interpretation of that would be, if you said, you know, to someone where's the Driftway, I don't think they would say that this is necessarily the Driftway. They'd say that this is the Driftway. So, I mean, if, if that's the correct interpretation, we obviously meet that design review standard. If you think that, you know, this section of Old Driftway is part of what's defined, you know, what should be the Driftway, again, we have good reason to ask for consideration of, of this alternative.
I, I think we can, we can answer that. I, I certainly don't want to interrupt, but having written that section, we can talk about what the Driftway was intended to. May I? Or do you want to wait?
Just as soon as I go through the presentation.
Oh, happy to do this anyway you wish. We're here to, to get your, your feedback.
We'll let you keep on working, you get tired, and then we'll talk.
Excellent, thank you.
Don't leave it that open-ended.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be brief. I have two more, two more issues to, to talk about, then I'm, I'm happy to turn it over to you.
Okay.
Section F deals with building length. No building structure shall be longer than 120 feet measured along any side of the building which faces the street. Again, we have the sort of Driftway, non-Driftway issue. We have 257 feet of frontage on, I'm just calling this old, old Driftway here. We've designed this building, again, our, our goal is to have meaningful retail, I mean, 9,000 square feet of retail, 100% first floor of that front building for retail. And so we've designed this so that the, the facade facing Old Driftway is 120 feet wide. We sort of shaped the building such that we met that requirement. And, and we want to make sure that, you know, that's consistent with your understanding of that provision. I took a look at actually your discussion regarding building length and some of the proposed conditions for 50 Country Way. You talked about, you know, the facade being no, no longer than 120 feet. Just as an aside, I mean, we are going to have articulation here. The bylaw requires that we have the front facade no longer than 50 feet without articulation. We've shown some sort of contextual, conceptual architectures in various meetings, but there's no question that, we, we know that this can't be a, a wall like the CBS on Front Street, and so it will, it will be designed accordingly. So we, we think we, we've hit, hit that design review requirement, we just want to confirm that. The, the last issue is not a design review standard. It's in a different section of your bylaws, 560.4. Section D is on page 74. And it has to do with the, the interpretation of your provision relating to send your net for area for retail. So you require more than 50% of net for area on the first floor. A mixed-use building shall be occupied by retail use. Again, here, you know, the front building, we're proposing 100% retail on the first floor, but, but our design does call for a connection on the second floor.
Second and third.
Second and third floor, thank you. And so we, we want to make sure that we're being upfront and, and talking to the, the board about this. Again, we believe that, that we meet that design review standard, but if there's any issue with respect to that, we obviously want to hear your, your concerns regarding that. And so those are really the, the four issues where we try to work really hard to come up with a, a concept that we believe meets that, and we very much welcome your input on that, because the next step is to go back and do our, our final design in preparation for an application.
Thank you. Laura, you had some comments?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to address.
And the introduction.
Yeah, some comments and introduction. Do you want me to do one first, or?
I'll make sure you do both.
Okay, yep. So the, the discussion about the Driftway versus the Old Driftway versus the New Driftway, when you go through the list of the streets in, in the street list, I don't believe there is anything called out as Old Driftway. I think that's kind of a nicety that maybe has developed with people trying to distinguish it from the New Driftway. My understanding, and there may be people in the room that know this much better than I do, but my understanding was that the Driftway originally went from Stockbridge Road all the way to Kent Street, and that the New Driftway, where the Burger Bar, Driftway Medical Center, and those buildings are, that that was constructed as kind of a connector, and that that was called the New Driftway. So for that reason, when Driftway was used in the bylaw, it was meant to. So, for that reason, when Driftway was used in the bylaw, it was meant to apply to the road that Driftway, you know, seemed to apply to in the street list, which is, you know, I think actually both sides of this, of the road there. So, that was the story with, with the Driftway.
So, let me make sure I understood what you just said. So, you're thinking that the Driftway, as it's called here, is from the Rotary to Town Center. That's the Driftway?
No, what I heard is exactly opposite.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
I heard both the, from the Rotary all the way to Kent Street, in addition, from the stoplights at the Pet or Celtic Paws over up to Stockbridge Road.
I think I really didn't explain this very well.
May I? So, please.
May I? Okay. Driftway runs from Stockbridge Road down to the intersection of Driftway and New Driftway. You take a left onto the regular Driftway, you follow it all the way down to where you take the right to the Cituate Country Club. That, too, is the Driftway that goes all the way up to the ocean. The New Driftway runs from the Rotary to the Animal Hospital.
Right.
That's the delineation.
Great, well, I was on the same page.
I agree.
To the Animal Hospital? Why would the Animal Hospital live?
Well, because on that corner.
That's that corner. To the corner. Celtic Paws is on-
That drawing shows it the other way.
The Animal Hospital, the words on that plan are not necessarily correct on the roads.
Oh, okay, so this is accurate.
That's the former Animal-
By the way, our plan is consistent because we're calling the Old Driftway. I think it's consistent with Ann is saying. The problem is you don't define what the Driftway is.
Well, that is the Driftway.
Right.
That's the Driftway.
The Driftway is defined in the street list.
As the Driftway.
So, and it's defined exactly the way Ann just described it.
By the way, we're not here to argue the point. This is an example of some of the confusion that we have trying to come up with some of the answers to these questions.
The layout of the roads is maybe a little confusing. I don't think it's really conceptually confusing.
No, it isn't.
Well, conceptually, what was this written around?
It was written around the way Ann just described it, which I think is the way-
Both roads.
Most people in town understand where those roads are.
Both roads.
It takes like a right turn.
Yeah.
It takes like a sharp turn, right, both roads.
The original Driftway was, was L-shaped.
So, what we're saying is where it's marked Old Driftway is really Driftway.
So, we are going to consider both the Old Driftway and the New Driftway to be the Driftway for purposes of the VBO Green Bush bylaw.
And I have one question. I know that, not that it's the most accurate thing in the world, maybe Ann knows this, where it says commuter rail parking lot, there's a sign. Doesn't it say Old Driftway on it?
It does.
No, I'm just asking.
That's a good point, yeah. It's not, however, in the street list. There's nothing in the street, in the town street list that's called Old Driftway. So, I don't know why they put the sign up that way. You know, that would certainly confuse people.
May I ask, or do you want to con-
We're going to continue with the, or continue with Laura.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, just going to kind of go back over some of the history of this bylaw. It was, you know, not a bylaw that's been around for very long. It was developed with some extensive work that the board was kind of spearheaded, which involved two consultants who worked together. One was an architect, the other one was a planner. And the idea of having the retail up to the street was intended to create that village atmosphere. The roof pitch was intended to reflect some of the architecture of the villages. And those are, the reasons for those features were to try to make even new construction somewhat compatible with the other styles of building in the immediate area so that if you had a brand-new building, it would be great to have it, but it would also be really good to have it blend nicely with, with the surroundings. I don't think I really have too many other comments right now, but I did also want to introduce Ted Rovitz. He's the Economic Development Committee's consultant, and he's attended a number of their meetings. And the reason why I thought he might be valuable to you was just to provide a perspective of someone who's worked in a lot of towns in an economic development capacity and can maybe provide a little bit of insight about whether, you know, what really is, is a town's perspective on parking, setbacks, and that type of arrangement. And just maybe discuss a little bit whether this has been kind of a deal breaker for other developers, or whether, you know, a development of this size has been able to function in, you know, maybe a variety of settings. But, you know, I mean, I'm kind of leaving that up to you if you want to, if you want to hear from something, from him about something like that.
Welcome aboard, by the way.
My name's Ted Rovitz, I'm glad to meet everybody.
Glad to meet you.
I am, as Laura said, helping the EDC on several of their economic development initiatives. At the present, we're working on a business profile inventory as well as business records, which will be put in each of the four villages. We're also updating the homepage for the EDC and putting together some information that potential businesses might want and need if they're thinking about relocating or expanding in Cituate. So, that is essentially the bulk of what I've been doing the last couple of months. Laura asked me to come in and, you know, be part of this process as well. I have to say, this is the first time I've seen this concept. In fact, I'm looking at this, you know, for copy here, so I just, so I'm ready for this whole process. But I, the only thing I can sort of add to the discussion at this point is, I've written a lot of zoning for village centers, I do it on a regular basis. I'm doing two or three right now. And whether it's existing villages like Front Street and the Harbor Village, or blossoming villages, or, you know, redevelopment-type villages, it really comes down to the details in their dimensional standards as far as the placement of the buildings, the placement of the parking, the orientation, and the connection that the buildings and the sites have with the surrounding streets and open spaces. So, when we put together the zoning, and you see things in your, obviously, your overlay district, which say that the buildings should be up to close to the street, that the ground floor should be primarily commercial uses, that the, that the parking should be to the side or the rear, those are all the essential elements of creating the village center. So, I guess you have to go back and think about, you know, what the overall objective is for the Driftway. If it is to, over time, create infill development that essentially gets that more walkable, you know, commercial, visible, walkable-type village setting like you have in Harbor, then you need to stick to those pretty good standards. If, if the idea is just to attract, you know, mixed use and, you know, investment, then there's some flexibility in that, in that option. But I don't really know at this point what the, what the overall plan, I don't think there is an overall plan at this point for the Driftway. But I can tell you that I see a lot of infill developments that are transit-oriented developments or in, you know, sort of strip developments that have been regenerated, that have been very successful. There's one going on right now in West Concord, a village center, which is just directly across the way from an MBTA station. The town has an agreement with the MBTA to utilize that parking in the off-peak hours and to allocate a certain number of spaces to support their blossoming village center. So, there's a big project going in right now that's about 50 units of housing in about, I think, 30,000 square feet of commercial.
This is next to the commuter rail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The West Concord Station.
Across, across the street.
Yeah, yeah, old depot buildings that have been light industrialized.
All right where you are.
Be developed right now. With minimal parking on site because they're utilizing what they can in the surrounding area. Another good one is on Linden Street in Wellesley, just opposite one of the other commuter stations called Linden Square. In that case, they basically did infill developments in front of an existing supermarket. They did not add any additional parking to the plan, have a mix of commercial, ground floor, residential above, and it's right up to the street. In fact, they did a wonderful job with the streetscape work and some plaza areas that have really become gathering spots. And that's really a blossoming extension to their current village center. So, it can't be done, and it's been done in several locations, it's a matter of, again, what the overall vision is or should be for, for Driftway. And, and I think you can accomplish that through your overlay district today, but it's a matter of, you know, what those objectives are.
May I? Okay. I'm a big proponent of having retail closer to the street. And one of the issues that I see with the Driftway and where this parking lot currently exists is that it is elevated so that when you drive by, you're basically, you're looking up. And if you're going to bring this back 80 feet, when you drive by on the street, whether you're going to the parking lot or wherever you're going, even when you're walking, you really will not see it. If it were closer to the street, if it were, as Ted has just pointed out, beautifully landscaped, lovely to look at, if even on the second floor, there's a bump out so that people can sit there and watch people go by, have your parking to the rear, to the side, you can reconfigure this in such a way that it is the most attractive thing that ever happened. Utilize the height that you have, but so that it can be seen from the street. As it stands now, 80 feet back, basically what I see here, unfortunately, is a strip mall. And we deserve, you can do more than a strip mall. Whether it's elevations, whether it's bump outs, whatever it is, I really dislike the parking in the front of, I look at the Village Marketplace with all of that pavement, and it makes me crazy. It should be in the back of it. And whatever the retail is, if people want what that retail is, it doesn't make any difference, they'll come. And they'll walk. And it should be a walkable either to the train or to this, because it's all in a state of flux. If you look at the Animal Hospital on the Driftway side, the New Driftway side, it's very close to the street, and the parking is on the Driftway side. Celtic Paws, it's the same thing. It's close to the street, and the parking is to the side. So, you know, I understand your concept. I applaud you for your concept, but I really think, from my standpoint, I really, though I will probably not be able to vote on it because I'm just your pesky alternative, ultimate, what can I say? You know, I was involved with the Village Overlay District, I've been involved with planning off and on for years, and I think that this can be absolutely fabulous, it just needs to be tweaked. And I think you can do it.
I don't know if you're looking for us to respond.
No, I'm just throwing out ideas.
I think you're going to get a opinion from the board.
Oh, and we're happy to just, we're here to listen. I mean, and-
We love to talk. We'll go down to board, or we just?
Yeah, I guess, to add to Ann's comments, I do agree with her very much. And I think that when I first heard Adam describing this, it reminded me of like the village in Cohasset. I think it's called the village, the, is that the correct name, the one that's by the MBTA station there? And that has all this, like acres of parking in the front. And, you know, it's fine, as Ann said, you know, for retail and for a strip mall, but to walk, it's not very walkable. And I know in that case, it's on 3A, it's completely different. In this case, I do walk on this street all the time. I walk down to the train station, I walk, you know, along the, the Driftway slash old, slash new Driftway. And so, I think the, at least from my perspective, and I think much of the board, is that, to echo Ted's comments, is we are trying to create a walkable village, not just attracting retail for retail's sake, but to create something that is a sense of place. Because right now, there really isn't much of a sense to Green Bush, and this is like the, one of the, I believe this parcel and the Celtic Paws eventually are really sort of the linchpin, it's the gateway, and it really needs to be done correctly. So, my thought is that the parking in the front's not exactly the best situation either.
Well, I would, I would echo Richard and Ann's comments about making it walkable. It looks like we're talking about 54 units there, another 30 units that we're talking about at, you know, at 50 Countryway, so that's, yeah, that's 84 units, a couple of hundred people at least who are going to live in that immediate area as a minimum. So, and you want them to be able to walk to all of this. And then, as Richard said, I think Celtic Paws ultimately might end up being something else. And then there's the, the auto store across the street that could end up being something else as well. And all of it sort of needs, I think, to be looked at as a, as a way, a walkable, connectable way, and tying into the walk from Driftway as well. So, I tend to agree, I, you know, I think there might be just other, other ways to look at this to help design the parking so that it, it's still accessible to the retail. I think Ann's right, too, is that, you know, if you're 80 feet back, you might not have that much visibility.
And I know that this was totally preliminary, but this was one of the first concepts, I think, the board saw, that Laura, which is, you know, this does have it right on, are very close to the street. And I remember looking at this thinking, oh, that's really nice, you know?
And again, business reasons are driving the parking in, in front of that, which is that we have no confidence that we could get tenants for that original concept. And so, that's, that's why we're here talking about this. As far as walkability-
I'm not sure I understand that. Why don't you have confidence you could get parking for, like, I'm looking at this, and there's parking over here for this access, and that would seem quite sufficient, right?
It's not a question of sufficient parking. Retail tenants want the parking in front of their stores. They don't want the parking around the corners to require, and residents don't want to deal with commercial traffic for customers for those retail uses. That's the conflict, that's the practical problem. So, we, we understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish here. Of course, we have an MBTA parking lot on one, on one side, we have a solid waste transfer station on the other side, and we actually have the Green Bush Station on, on the other side. Potentially, perhaps, Celtic Paws would be developed. But, you know, it's not, you know, it's, I don't think it's ever going to be a village center like North Cituate. Having said that, we were very, you know, we took, we know that this needs to be walkable because our tenants are going to be taking the train into Boston. And so, that's, that's why there are direct connections to get to the Green Bush line.
As I said, there's, there's another 30 apartments going in just across the way.
Sure, sure, from the other, other side.
Yeah.
That's right.
And I dare say they would end up walking over here, right? So-
And nothing that we're proposing is going to interfere with that, and we're certainly, but that was our dilemma.
But, for instance, I mean, just in my opinion, and I know, again, the Harbor's different, but I never have said to myself, oh, I'm not going to go to Front Street Gourmet because I can't park right in front of it, or Teacase, or any of those businesses down there. I feel like sometimes we overblow the, the parking situation. And I agree with Ann is that, you know, if people are, if it's a retail that people are going to go to, they're, they're going to go no matter what. I don't have to park right in front of it. That's my opinion.
Sure. No, I understand.
And again, I park, Cole Parkway all the time and walk to the Mill Wharf or walk to, down to the coffee place. I don't have to park right in front of it.
Often what happens, it's the, not the tenants, it's the owners who park in front of their stores. Believe me. I have been in business in North Cituate for 25 years, and I have two parking spaces in front of my shop, and I don't give parking a thought. Snowbanks, yes. Parking, no. If people, if I have what they want, they show up. And they do. And people need to become a destination. You, I don't know where this concept of you have to have all of this parking in front of it, I respectfully disagree.
No, no, I, we're still not here. The one point I would make is, my wife's who's handicapped would not be able to visit this place because there's no parking in front.
Well, in this particular situation, I mean, as an example, there's, there's one row of parking.
You couldn't design it to make it handicap accessible?
It would have to be handicap accessible, but as a, as a practical matter, there's no way that she can- that she can get around the corner and get into a retail store facing old Driftway. I mean, that's a minor case, I'm just saying that there are other considerations here.
I guess, yeah, I'm just, I'm not following that. What do you mean that she couldn't get around the cor, I'm not, what corner are you talking about?
Well, you put the street, I mean, you put the building on the street.
Yeah.
The parking's gonna have to be around here, so the entrance to the retail is gonna be here, because you want, you want an entrance on here, so you gotta get people to walk around the corner, which is fine for people, bodies of people.
They could always enter from the back, as they do with the Welsh company.
And if we... In any event, we're getting off the subject, I just wanted to point that out.
Well, and if we, if I'm not, maybe I'm mistaken here, but there's, the maximum could be 15 feet, so you could have a parking space in front, right? One row of parking, like they've done here.
Well, again, we need some, we need some relief from the prohibition against parking within the setback. So there are two issues, which is the setback issue. So, you know, now we're talking about a five and 15-foot setback. And then you've got the prohibition of parking within that setback.
But it looks like we have some latitude on making those decisions though, because as you suggest, we're supposed to consider the extent to which...
If, again, if you, if the sense of the board is that perhaps some parking, you know, less than what we're proposing, within that setback would be appropriate, certainly something we'd consider in the design.
Can I see one thing?
Go ahead.
I just wanna say that, a couple things. One of the things we're starting to put into zoning codes these days is what we call street-side parking. So essentially, it's a single row of parallel street spaces, and it functions like on-street parking, but it's on private property. So essentially, what you do is, you allow it, but basically it's a continuation, extension of the road, and you put the sidewalk behind it, so that there is some on-street parking that functions and is established in front of the building. And it works, it's useful. What might happen in this case is that people that are going on the train might end up parking in those spaces in daytime hours, but...
Unless they were handicapped or something.
Right, but you could say that if somebody that were handicapped as well. The other idea is you could simply, you could flip the parking scheme, the axis around on the north side, so that you had parking directly access into the sidewalk in front of the building. There are ways to accommodate parking spaces, and that's certainly something that needs to play an important role in the design.
In your parking zone, right?
But the, but the street-side parking has been pretty effective, where you've got narrow right-of-ways and you wanna provide some on-street parking, which is, again, one of those characteristics that is, you know, part and parcel of a successful building center.
Yeah, it's interesting, I was gonna say something like that. You know, the stretch of Front Street that has no on-street parking is, to me, pretty dead and uninteresting. You wanna have a sense, if you're thinking of going to an establishment, that other people are already there, that it's busy, that it's successful, that it's, you know, desirable for other people to be there, and therefore it's desirable for you to be there. And I think on-street parking actually does that. It's a total, you know, it's a disconnect in perhaps reality, but in, in the sort of mental process and perception, I think there's, there's quite a connection. I do agree that a gesture, and even a significant gesture, should be attempted to get some of this life, some of the glitter that's going to be in this, in this, in these storefronts, you know, some of the merchandising, some of the, some of the lighting, some of the signage, some of the life, out at the street. And I think that's not just because we'd like to see it, but because it's, it's gonna work better. You know, right now, you've, you've created a situation where if I'm parked somewhere in the MBTA parking lot, and I'm tempted to utilize one of the commercial establishments in this building, I've literally no choice. I've got to get in my car, drive out of the parking lot that I'm in, drive into your parking lot, find a parking space, if I'm lucky, and, and get out and go into the store. I'd love to see something that would be close enough and, and attractive enough so that, you know, I'm tempted to walk there from wherever my car is parked elsewhere in this, in this large area of parking. And it doesn't mean the entire building has to be along the street, but, but some significant portion of this, you know, and perhaps it reconfigures so that side parking as well as front parking is the, is the kind of basic parking pool, if you will, that's utilized by the building. That's, that's what I'm visualizing.
Well, that's what I was thinking, how can we maybe work on-street parking or something like that in? But one thing that, that I was thinking, and Ann's been doing some drawings here too that kinda went along with my thinking, is, is, you know, we have that 120 frontage, you know, where we want that, and what if we had that, that part kind of down closer to the street, and then we had the parking on the side, so you could pull in, get there, if you were handicapped, you could get, get in front of the stores. You know, obviously the second, third floor where they would be connected, that would still be there, and it would, it would have that separation from, you know, the more retail parking, and leave the residential around the back and then further down the side. They would pull it a little closer to the street and, and, you know, give you some room for a, a little plaza or something in front, but still give you, you know, I don't know, I'm guessing a dozen parking spaces on each side.
And you've seen, we started that concept, that plaza right there in front and the walkway, and so we'll take these ideas and refine that.
Is part of, I'm just, I'm just trying to visualize this spot, is part of your problem the fact that essentially the street, to get to any building, that from the street to the building front, you've got a significant grade?
And I, I, again, we don't have the topography, the topography changes, I don't think there's a significant change in grade from the street up the driveway to the front of the building.
That'd be very surprising.
Yes, I can put signs in there.
On the other side, it's steeper.
Much steeper.
It's the backside, it's the backside where you have a significant grade, and so there'll be, have to be some extension, cutting, but the front, it's fairly, I mean, it does go up, I'm not, and I wish I had the topography, because we could answer that definitively. There's no question it goes up, but I don't think you're looking at a looming structure and you're down below it.
So we've got a topo plan over here, it doesn't look that extreme.
Well, north, right, is it north of, I'm assuming? Then I know there's more of an embankment.
In the rear, clearly the rear of the property. Yeah, it's pretty gradual, and there it goes, it goes up.
Could, before I forget, I need to come back and revisit one other issue, the alleyway, for lack of a better word, between the buildings?
Yes.
You mentioned that was to be left open on the first floor, possibly to be developed as a drive-through, possibly just a walking...
As a driveway, I'm not sure about a drive-through.
What was the reasoning behind that? Is that like a...
It's access, access to the green space area around, from that side of the building. So, the idea is to create more public access to that green space.
And the green space area is where, Adam?
This is gonna be the green space area, so the follow-up is be able to provide access for the public to use it.
Because, very honestly, I look at that and it looks like a wonderful place to get mugged. I'm sorry, that's my, that's my very strong, very first...
I can honestly say I've never heard that thought in North Citywood before.
I'm sure, I'm sure you haven't, probably won't again.
Well, and in my, to kind of tack on to Bob's comment, I don't think it, personally, is a place to be mugged, but it does kind of reek to me of kind of private. Like, right away, when I look at that, I say, oh, you know, that could be like the, the pool area or something.
I just thought of a pool as well.
It's my green space.
Yeah, exactly. Like, as a resident of Citywood, I would feel very strange walking back there, through this pathway, back to that area, even though quote-unquote it might be public space, it doesn't seem very public. Whereas, I think what the board's looking for is maybe like more...
Like walkways too.
Yeah, outdoor restaurant areas or patios or things that are really very, more public in that nature.
I was wondering, you know, getting back to some of the comments that were made before about the front building, and also about the, about the public benefit of the, making the entrance more attractive. If that building came up, you know, significantly towards the street, if there was any thought to, you know, little outdoor tables for, you know...
Exactly, I mean, we...
That's already shown up next to the building.
Yeah, we do have that.
It was moved out to the street.
But I mean, I think, you know, when people are walking along the street, they really see that better? And also, where you have that, that significant public benefit that you have to do, you know, to make that area really nice and really kind of sparkle, might be a way to achieve that.
Sort of thinking of the front space.
But I think with the parking, it kind of really does separate it.
Let me, let me chip on, what is, I think you've kind of agreed on in terms of parking, parking in the front, license that the board got, I don't wanna see, see, until they move closer.
Yes, sir.
You'd have to do one hell of a lot of selling to tell me that making yours, your building beautiful is a benefit to the town, for the public benefit.
Oh, we're not making the buildings beautiful, we were talking about...
Creating a whole area here, we'd have to get permission out of the city to do this in the layout.
This is a really good idea.
Improving the public sideways, this whole entrance here. Right now, it's desolate concrete, there's nothing out there. You know, lampposts, plants, you know, to create that...
You're gonna create an oasis for me?
Oasis may be a stretch, but yes, to really, to, we need to make this area pop, we have every economic interest, make this area pop, make it attract customers for the retail. And so you get a sense of that, this is just a concept, because before we actually do the final plans, we needed to know what you both wanted to see here with respect to the front of the building.
And I think the green space, I think I said jokingly, but it's, it comes out as my green space, I think it's associated with the buildings and not necessarily with the area.
Yes, if you have other suggestions of, you know, public benefits that you're looking for on, I'm still gonna refer to as old Driftway, you know, we're certainly open to those, those suggestions.
And as far as, and I guess the subtlety that you're looking at is, the floor area concerned with connecting the two buildings, it creates a larger floor area. I guess from my standpoint, I would treat that as two separate buildings.
Thank you.
I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I'd only do that.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, we just, we just did that, 50 Country Way. Right, so, I mean, that's, that could certainly be mixed use in residential construction.
Could you even put offices in the back?
Depending on what it looks like, 100, what is it, 120 where it stepped in and then 150 or so?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and I think...
I guess the, excuse me, or Richard, depending on what that looks like, I'd have to make a judgment on what it looks like, as opposed to sitting there sending carpentry.
And you're, you're also proposing to break it up at 50-foot breaks and all that.
Yes.
We can look at those boxes on the ground, and each has a different vision as what they look like, but they're all built...
I understood, understood.
And what was your fourth question?
I think you've, sorry, for building length and the parking and the setback.
No, no issues, Adam, on height?
Well, we can make the height work.
Okay.
We looked at it pretty carefully and make it work.
Do you have, I don't have a sense, but I'm assuming you have some views for, for the residential, to the, to the river and all that? I don't know.
There's a lot of trees there, there.
I don't think so.
Perhaps up in here, this is actually the intended main entrance to the residential.
Oh, okay.
Over here, this is a little outdoor seating area, it was a sense of place and entrance for the residential units, so that is sort of the separation.
Again, we're trying to separate the residential from the retail.
I mean, it's sort of mixed, but, you know, one, a little separation for the residences.
What's the parking ratio that you're using based on this site?
I believe we...
Comply, yeah. Yeah, we're not, at this point, we're not asking for relief with respect to the number of parking spaces, we're going to provide what you require. We have, we have an abundance of parking in the MBTA parking lot.
Yeah, it just strikes me, there's a lot of, a lot of area dedicated to parking as opposed to living.
Thinking of your parking in front of the building, it's just immediately across the street.
Is there, has there been any discussion with the MBTA about making like a walkway, you know, like a little pedestrian connection, obviously wouldn't have to go very far, to their parking lot?
Well, there already is, there's a striped crosswalk.
I mean, within your, your parking area, I noticed that where you cut, where the property line cuts across their spaces, it would kind of make their spaces longer. You kind of have to look at the plan to see it, but...
Yeah, there would be a lot of...
So people, I guess, they might have gone in a little further.
No, these are gonna be, these will be likely, so we're talking about these little spaces here, yeah, we would...
Would you have some...
I mean, from residential...
I think from the...
Oh, yes, that's, that's, yeah, I really think the key question is legally what we can use and what we can't use. We can't use it for our, that is, maybe overblown.
But you know the way that...
From walking.
I like the new...
Yeah.
It's just was skated, it felt more like a village center than it was a strip mall, which is what capacity is. And, and, you know, it's not really... 3A and all that. But this one has the potential, it's other than that. I have a lot more pedestrian...
I think they've restriped it.
So people have a destination.
Yeah, it seems, seems like a logical idea.
Good, good, I mean, no, we're great, we've gotten the guidance that we need, and we hope to see you again shortly.
I was gonna ask, you may have some additional comments. Any other comments from the public?
I got a comment. My name's David Banks, I'm a local Citywood resident, and I've been working with a restaurant owner about potentially opening up a restaurant in town here. And my concerns with this location are not having parking in the front. It's, there might be, I'm not really sure on the exact size of the building, but, you know, five tenants, I'm not sure how walkable five retail locations are. The, I used to have an office in the name Shipyard, and I think that place is terrible because you never know if anyone's in any of the buildings, like Bob was saying, or Rob's are. It just seems empty, and they actually have like one spot out in front, and it still feels really empty to me. And I don't think people are gonna be walking, you know, four retail locations. If you're, you know, pulling up to go to the surf shop, why are you gonna then walk, you know, three storefronts down to do something else? So if you're the middle tenant, I would definitely not be interested in, you know, leasing that spot. If I had a corner unit, I would think about it, but at the same time, I don't really, for, for a commercial space, obviously the easier it is to pull up out in front. I don't go to Front Street Gourmet, I've never been there in my life, to be honest with you. And the easier it is to park, the more likely that place is gonna succeed. And as one of the first buildings going into Green Bush, if it doesn't succeed, it's not gonna help anybody else trying to come in there and do any development. And I'm just not sure how walkable it is in general. I mean, currently, it's not, so the people going in there are really taking a big shot that over the next 10 years, it's gonna become walkable, but it's not walkable right now. And over, I think you had a time about some property on the other side... And over, I think you had a time about some property on the other side of, like Vine Morning Glory, is that where the other?
Yeah.
I mean, that, to me, is just not, it's not that walkable, that's a longer bridge that some people give it credit for sometimes, but, you know, as a potential tenant, I would want parking out front as much as humanly possible, and I do think it's going to look empty if there's no parking out there, and I think the actual locations themselves may or may not be empty at first, and that's tough, for being the first guys in, it's like, I understand the village atmosphere, but how are you creating it with the MBTA lot across the street? Like, where are we getting this village feel from, which would be great for a restaurant to be in a village feel, but this is one building where, you know, maybe South Celtic Park, when does that even happen? I mean, it's, people are going to drive to my restaurant, period, they're not walking there. They're not going to walk there anytime in the near future. And the 70 people that live upstairs are probably going to get tired of eating there after three months. So, the more parking, the better, is just like my two cents, I like, I'd like to go over there, but I don't, the Hingham Shipyard works well all the way that it's laid out, and I know it's, I get the point, and I think it would be nice and all that for the town and everything, but I just don't know if that particular parcel is ever going to pull off a village feel with, you know, an MBTA lot across the street, and a cement plant, and a dump behind it, and everything else, so, you know, the more parking, the more likely I'd sign a lease over there, if there's absolutely no parking up front. I think it changes it up, I'd have to see who, I'd probably wait and see who else went in there, and try to get a feel for exactly how the parking was going to lay out. Just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Got a sense of where we're headed?
Excellent, this is great, thank you for your time.
Do you think, do you think both of them are on these things, or some comparative?
Have we done these projects before?
You got something comparative to it?
We've developed about 1,000 units throughout the state. The last one is in South Boston, it's 340 units, so all these have one floor, so we've done quite a few.
Website?
Website, yep.
You developed the Naperville River one.
Yes.
That was pretty much just a residential tower.
It's a total residential, handsome building.
Thank you, but there's no question, a little harder time with the retail.
I'm sorry?
We'll have a much more difficult time getting tenants, since there's no parking up front, I'm sure of that. I think I can work it out, but, see what happens.
Just curious, have you looked at, there's a lot of information on the website from the EDC, the draft that they did, as far as like, you know, creating the village cent, trying to create that sort of center point at Driftway and New Driftway, and having it be more of a gateway, and trying to develop that feel?
No, we have that information, we have that information. Shall I take another look at it?
Have you looked at the market study, where they're talking about what there really is a market for in Situate?
That was the first, that was the March 2014, yep, we've got that.
And I do think, yeah, I know right now, like, people have mentioned like the dump, and the, there's like the cement plant, but I think the idea is that...
Transfer station.
Yeah, that the transfer station, hopefully, one day will go away, and that maybe the cement plant would be something else, it's a long-term vision, but you have to start somewhere, I feel.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything we need to do?
No, that's it.
Bob's motion?
Bob's motion, second?
Second.
Close the favor?
Aye.